Okay, now we've had the experience of dealing with the, what's my theme? Progress in the city. And the second part of the theme is healthy choices. So yours truly had the experience of unexpectedly becoming a caregiver. Having no idea what is involved, found out that I was the power of attorney for someone's health, and all of a sudden I get a phone call saying, "You are up, and you need to now rise to the occasion and help your friend." Because my friend, 86 years young, who just passed away, that I had to be with him from August of last year to March of this year. And I did not want any of you to witness the experience that I went through with no knowledge. And what did I tell you about knowledge? With knowledge, there is what? Power. So I actually, the City of Inglewood partnered with NAACP and the USC Alzheimer's Disease Research Center on March 4th, Saturday, where we actually had a special session at the Inglewood Main Library, and I was able to give my testimony about what I'm going through at that time, not knowing that my friends were going to pass away 14 days later. Just didn't know. But what I did learn that you as a caregiver, or you may have a loved one, a friend of the family, or someone you may know that says they need help. My friend suffered dementia, which is called memory loss. I currently am dealing with, what am I dealing with? Memory, huh? Dealing with memory. We call it a senior moment. But I want to bring some experts up here because, again, I want to thank Tara Rose, who was very instrumental on sharing with me the information of going to bring me experts to talk to us regarding the early stages of memory loss and Alzheimer's and dementia. Please help me recognize Dr. Freddie Segal Gagin from the USC dermatologist. Please help me recognize her from the research center. Thank you very much. Come right this way.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm kind of coming home because my first job in medicine was here at Centinela Hospital. So that was almost 40 years ago. So it's sort of nice to be back. There is a PowerPoint if you want to pull it up. You don't have it?
You have the thumb drive?
I do, but I thought, they told me they had uploaded it, so hold on.
So while we're waiting on her to get the information, go to your handouts. Remember, I tried to move this thing forward. Go to the handouts, and you're going to see the USC Memory and Aging Center. You're also going to see the Key School of Medicine of USC. Pull all those things out because that will coincide with their presentation. Thank you.
I can test my memory and try to do it without. So first off, let me say that I work for you, and I want to thank you for paying your taxes. Because I work as a director of a state-funded Alzheimer's Research Center affiliated with USC located at Rancho Los Amigos Hospital, part of the county hospital system. And this is one of 10 centers funded by the state of California through your tax dollars that were created in 1985 to improve diagnosis and care and treatment for people with dementing disorders throughout the state of California. So anybody in California, from San Diego to San Francisco, is usually within an hour to an hour and a half's drive of a center with excellence. So we have that wonderful resource here. And I also work for you through the federal government because I work as part of the USC Alzheimer's Disease Research Center, which is funded by the National Institutes of Health, which on Friday got another $400 million for Alzheimer's disease, which is good news. But Alzheimer's is funded at about a tenth of the cost of cancer or heart disease. So while it is the sixth-leading cause of death in this country, it is very underfunded. And so we are very happy to have additional funding coming our way so we can try to improve care and treatment for individuals with Alzheimer's disease. So first, let me point out, memory loss is not a normal part of aging.
Oh, no!
No. Senior moments, yes. Memory loss, no. So just like chest pain is not normal, just like losing your eyesight is not normal, just like having shortness of breath is not normal, memory loss is a symptom of an underlying problem. And so if you're experiencing, or you know somebody who's experienced memory loss, that is, they cannot remember what they told you a minute ago, they cannot remember where they parked their car repeatedly, they cannot remember how to find their way home, those things are not normal. They cannot remember how to take their medication. That warrants going to the doctor and having an evaluation. Okay? Memory loss is not normal. And if someone tells you, "Well, what do you expect? You're X years old?" I would say, "I expect to be functioning well at 80 or 90," or whatever, "and I don't think you should ignore me and pay attention to me." Okay? When we're talking about these conditions, we need to make sure we're talking about in the terminology we understand. So memory loss, in medical terms, is called amnesia. Okay? Amnesia happens when you knock your head in a football game. If you have a lot of them, then it leads to dementia. But memory loss itself is not only amnesia. Amnesia is memory loss. That's not dementia. Okay? Amnesia happens when you have antestesiology for surgery because you don't remember the surgery, right? But that's not dementia. That is amnesia. Dementia is memory loss in other thinking problems. Problems balancing the checkbook, problems learning how to operate the microwave, problems learning how to work a new car, other problems, problems paying your taxes. That is affecting your function. So memory loss is more, is a part of dementia, but dementia is more than memory loss. Okay? And then, did you go ahead? Go back. Then there is Alzheimer's disease. You've all heard of Alzheimer's disease? Okay? It's not old-timers' disease. It's Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer was a physician over 100 years ago who described a woman who was 56 years old, that was old at that time, who was experiencing changes in her memory and her thinking and her behavior. Okay? And when he looked at her brain when she died, he described the changes that we now call Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer's disease is a kind of dementia. It's a form of dementia. But there are other forms of dementia, just like there are lots of kinds of cancer. So dementia includes Alzheimer's, what may be more than Alzheimer's. So if someone says you have dementia, what kind of dementia? Alzheimer's is the most common kind in older people. 60% of dementias in older people are Alzheimer's. That means 40% are other things. Okay? So Alzheimer's disease, the most common dementia amongst older adults, but not the only cause, due to changes in the brain that we call tangles and plaques. These are proteins that develop in the brain of all of us, but as we age, in some of us, they accumulate more than usual. Okay? And we now know that these abnormal proteins called amyloid beta and tau are the underlying cause. Just like cholesterol plaques are the underlying cause of heart disease, amyloid beta plaques and tau tangles are the underlying cause of Alzheimer's disease. And there are ways we can see them in the brain now in research that are moving out into clinical practice. But we don't yet have ways to test for them in a really good way. So a couple sobering facts. Five and a half million Americans have Alzheimer's disease. The majority of these are women. Aging is a women's issue, and Alzheimer's disease affects women more than men. 3.2 million women have Alzheimer's disease. One in three Americans have a family member affected by Alzheimer's disease. How many of here know someone with Alzheimer's disease? So look to your right and look to your left because one in three, okay? You may not know you have it. Okay? The other sobering fact is that African-Americans are two to three times more likely to develop Alzheimer's disease. African-Americans are at higher risk for Alzheimer's disease than Caucasians. Okay? Alzheimer's disease occurs in all races, but at different rates. And so there's some genetics around that that we don't yet understand, but we want to understand. 15 million Americans are care providers for a loved one, like the councilman was. Becoming a care provider is becoming increasingly common as we live older and older ages. Rosalind Carter said there are three kinds of people in the world. Those who have dementia, those who will get dementia, and those who take care of someone with dementia. Okay? So we're all going to be one of them. Some of us are going to be more than one of them. Okay? All right. And these are very expensive diseases. It costs about $20,000 a year to take care of someone with Alzheimer's disease or another dementia. And these diseases last a long time. 12 to 18 years. So you do the math. These are very, very expensive diseases. They are going to bankrupt our country. They are really going to bankrupt us unless we figure out how to take care of people better, and how to diagnose them better, and how to treat them better. Okay? Alzheimer's disease is a fatal disease, just like cancer used to be a fatal disease. But we put a lot of money into cancer in this country, and now cancer is a chronic disease. Alzheimer's is sixth-leading cause of death in the United States. It's in the top 10. It is the fourth-leading cause of death amongst African-Americans. Okay? It is the only cause of death in the top 10 for which there are no treatments and no cure. And I believe, just like we can put a man on the moon, we can find the cure. It's a matter of putting our minds together in this effort and putting our money where our minds are. Okay? So you need to know who's at risk. Mostly, if you live to old age, you're at risk. Age is something we all want to live to be, older and older, but we don't want to get dementia. Women are more likely than men, as I said, to get dementia, particularly Alzheimer's disease. African-Americans and Latinos, higher risk than Caucasians or Asians. Education. People with higher education have less dementia than people with lower education. So I always say, head start is the best dementia prevention program we have. Early childhood education. And when we start taking away money from childhood education, we are adding money to dementia at the end of life. Okay? And then vascular disease. If there are problems in your circulation, your circulation feeds the cells in your body and feeds the cells in your brain, those circulatory problems can lead to degeneration in your brain. Hypertension, which is more common in African-Americans, is a risk factor for many different dementias, including Alzheimer's disease. Diabetes, which affects the circulation in the body, is also a risk factor for Alzheimer's disease and other dementias. And high cholesterol or high lipids. So we have a saying, "What's good for your heart is good for your brain." So I was really glad to hear you talking about healthy foods in a grocery store that has healthy alternatives because those are things that preserve our heart and our brain and let us live well into older age. So clinical research is the way we get the answers. Now, I know and I want to acknowledge, in the African-American community, there is a lot of resistance and barriers to participating in research that is well-founded based on history. But I also want to tell you I have an agenda. We cannot figure out how these diseases are similar and different in different populations unless people from different populations participate in research. If the only people in our research studies are middle-aged white men, then we know what happens in middle-aged white men. Okay? And over the last 20, 30 years, we have many more women participating in research. So now we understand diseases in women. But if we don't have people from underrepresented communities, from African-American communities, from Latino communities, come forward and participate in our research studies, then we don't know how these diseases affect those people differently. So I am here really with that agenda to try to encourage you to come forward and participate in research, whatever it is, whether it's breast cancer research, cancer research, or Alzheimer's research. Our research helps us find new ways to identify early cognitive changes, how we can find out if these diseases are happening earlier and earlier. Our research lets us look for biomarkers. So a biomarker is a biological agent that helps you diagnose. So if you go to the doctor and you have your blood drawn and you test for sugar, that's looking for a biomarker for diabetes. Okay? Or if you go and get your chested for a sickle cell, that's a biomarker for sickle cell in your blood. We are looking to develop biomarkers so we can have tests for Alzheimer's disease. We have some of these developed already in research, and we need to refine them. So some of them have to do with special scans, and some of them have to do with looking at particles that are in the cerebrospinal fluid, in that fluid that bays our brain. But we need people to participate in the research so they can help us find the answers in what is similar about these biomarkers and different in different populations. So we've given you some information. The USC Alzheimer's Disease Research Center has a number of studies that we are actively seeking participation in. We are really looking at people who don't have dementia, yet. We are looking at people who are at risk for dementia. We are looking for people who are 60 years of age and older, who have high blood pressure and/or diabetes and/or high cholesterol, who may have minimal memory concerns or no memory concerns, or have a family member who had dementia. Because that puts you at risk. You share some genes with that person. We're looking for you to come forward and participate. We have a five-year observational study where we will provide MRI scans. We will provide testing at no cost to you and give you the information to take to your medical provider. But we want to see what happens over five years in individuals who are at risk for these kind of problems. We have clinical trials for people who are in the very early stages of these diseases. These are medications that are being tested that can remove those amyloid plaques, remove those tau tangles, and change the biology of these diseases. We know that by the time someone has memory problems, the changes have been happening in their brain for 10 to 15 years. It's like when you have your heart attack, God forbid, it's not the steak you ate the night before. It's all the steaks you've been eating for 20 years. Right? So we now know it's a similar process. It's things that you do for many, many years that lead to these changes, and we're trying to understand that. So please think about participating. I've given you the number here. You can call. We've given you handouts. I put my cards outside. And you can call the councilman's office even, and they will get in touch with you. Thank you very much.
Doctor, doctor, do not leave yet. I know some of us, mature adults, may have a few questions or comments. So if you'll give, anyone that wants to ask any questions or comments, please raise your hands. We'll bring the mic. Okay?
Yes. I just wanted to know, would sleep apnea have anything to do with this also?
Yes, very important. Sleep apnea does lead to cognitive impairment, changes in memory and thinking. It's a risk for Alzheimer's as well for other dementing disorders. When you have sleep apnea, you stop breathing. Your oxygen doesn't get to your brain. The brain cells need oxygen. Yes, so it's a reason to identify sleep apnea and treat sleep apnea very aggressively. Thank you for asking.
Okay, young lady up front?
Great.
No? You're letting it go? Okay, we got a couple more over here. I wonder when some men were going to raise their hands. I mean, we all have the same issue.
Doctor, thank you for all of that. I think it was important to hear that if you go to the doctors and they have the attitude, "Well, you're old anyway." You know, I've been a patient advocate for a very long time. So it's important for whoever does attend those visits, those hospital visits or doctor visits, I mean, drill down on them. Don't allow them to do that to your family.
I would say if someone says, "What do you think? You're old," that that's ageism, and that's just like racism.
That's right.
And it should not be tolerated.
All right. Gentlemen in the back. It's right there. Fantastic.
Thank you, doctor, for being here with your good, informative advice. We should all take a heed in it. I got a question about diabetic condition. I've seen many doctors over the years, and it seems that there's no cure or less than no cure that we have. Can you share something on that for us?
For diabetes?
Diabetic condition, yes.
So, well...
I mean, we, some of us are taking pills, some of us taking insulin, but it doesn't seem to work, or...
Well, first of all, managing diabetes, the cornerstones of managing diabetes are diet and exercise. And only when diet and exercise fail do we resort to pills. But the reality is, I've been in practice for 35 years, that getting people to change their diet and to exercise is much more difficult than getting them to take a pill. Okay? It's much less costly to diet and exercise than take a pill. But people always want the easy way out. Okay? If you walk 1,000, 10,000 steps a day, your need for diabetes medicine will go down dramatically over three months. Okay? So I would say, get yourself one of those things that tell you how far you walk, and walk 10,000 steps a day. You don't do it all at once. Do it in 1,000 steps at a time. And you will see your weight go down, and you will see your sugar better controlled, and your need for medication go down. Okay? So don't park in the closest parking spot. Park in the farthest parking spot. And let the disabled people use the close one and walk.
There you go. Let's give the doctor a hand if you would, please. Dr. Freddie Segal Gagin, USC. But again, I want to stress, you weren't with me on March 4th when I was at the meeting, and I felt like I was alone because dealing with my friend and not knowing what is responsible to be as a caregiver. And one of the worst things you have to deal with is a friend you love, and you have to remove that friend's independence. The number-one issue that we fought till his dying day was I took away the car keys. Major, major, major. But the caveat was that, that we used his car to go to the doctor's office. So when we made the appointments, we, I drove him in the car, and he called his car, "This is my baby." And that's how we was able to compromise, for me to do the grocery shopping, make the doctor's appointments, go and see him, but also understanding I couldn't be with him 24 hours a day. And in fact, I didn't have the skills and ability to cook three meals a day plus snacks. So I was able to find an organization that specializes in caregiving. Now, I paid his bills, did all the errands and that kind of stuff, but he needed a companion. A person alone, you're depressed. Family won't come to see you. That you feel like a misfit. Can you feel me? And so as a consequence, you'd be amazed of the power of a caregiver that will come, fix him hot meals. He still had the skills to take his own shower and also get dressed. But the ideal of being able to fellowship, be able to fix the meals that he likes to eat, have the snacks he likes to eat, have a person as a companion to watch the movies of his choice of watching TV, families for some reason just don't take the time. I don't care to take the time, and what they want to do is put him in a nursing facility. And he says, "I want to live in my home until I die." And if nothing else, I did for him was that I held him in his house until he passed away. Until he passed away. But in order to do the selection, where do you find a caregiver that you now have to entrust? Your loved one? The contents of his home? As well as the ability to care for his health? Well, I was blessed because someone introduced me to a company called Always Best Care Senior Services. And I will let this person share with you, who happens to be the owner and president, that has made a difference in my friend's life, in my life, and will be friends for life. Please help me recognize Ms. Lali Ramazani.
Thank you. Thank you. I first want to thank Councilmember Ralph Franklin for the invitation. I also wanted to thank his assistant, Ms. Thomas, who's been very supportive. And I wanted to thank all of you for being here. As the councilmember mentioned, my name is Lali Ramazani. I'm the president and owner of Always Best Care Senior Services. I'm also a certified senior advisor, which makes me semi-specialist, you know, having a better understanding and appreciation for what the elderly goes through. If you could move to the next slide, please. Thank you. In 2011, the first group of baby boomers, born in 1946, turned 65. We are seeing the biggest and quickest aging of America's population in our history. We are all living longer due to the advancement in medicine and technology. So what happens with that? You know, the previous speaker talked about the Alzheimer's and dementia. Not all of us are going to get Alzheimer's and dementia, but many of us are going to live longer. We are going to live in our 90s. You know, we have clients that are in their 100s. So what happens is that the body goes through the normal process of aging. Just as, you know, I'm not as fast and as flexible as my teenage daughter is. As we get to be 80s, in our 80s and 90s, we are not going to be as flexible, as, as mobile as we were when we were in our 40s and 50s. So part of that creates some issues with our balances. As we get older, our hearing may not be as good as it used to be before. As we get older, our eyesight may not be as good as it was before. And all of these could create some challenges, some limitations for us where we want to just do our daily routines, basically. If you could go to the next slide, please. So balance, the next slide. Thank you. So balance is one of the major issues. I've been in business for four years, and I've seen more share, more than my share of, you know, individuals that are healthy, but because they have balance issues, they fall. And when they fall, either they break, you know, a bone, if it is a knee, a hip, or anything like that, or other issues that follow after a fall. Right? So balance is a major issue. According to CDC, one out of three Americans over age 65 falls each year. Every 15 seconds, an adult is treated in the emergency room for a fall. So what also happens, what comes with that is that if we have challenges with our balance, with our mobility, if you are, especially if we do take a fall, then we will be concerned about leaving the house. Right? We don't want to walk too much because we are afraid we may walk. As we get older, we may have challenges with our continence. Right? Going to the bathroom may be difficult, on one hand. On the other hand, getting to the bathroom because it requires the walking to the bathroom. We may not be able to take the walks, the steps, as fast as we should. So for those reasons, we may also have concerns and try to self-limit ourselves. We will self-isolate ourselves. So a lot of our elderly, unfortunately, that because of these challenges, again, especially if they're living on their own, they decide not to leave the house as often. If we don't leave the house, if we don't leave the room, we don't go out to get some fresh air, you know, it could change our moods. It could change our, you know, our emotions, basically. Some resort to alcohol. Alcohol could cause more depression. And I listed suicide. And it is unfortunate, but the rate of suicide among the elderly is higher than the rate of suicide among the teens. One of the reasons is that, you know, what I just talked about. The other reason is that, you know, when somebody is a teenager, teenagers are expected to go to school. So if they don't go to school maybe one day or two days, or the parents or the family knows about them, then they can come and, you know, help them. Whereas with the elderly, nobody is really expecting to see the elderly outside the house, especially if you're retired, you're at home. So you may stay at home for a longer period of time. Family is busy. Children are busy with their own lives. So when you're at home by yourself, then all of those could cause, you know, additional challenges. On top of that, as we get older, we are under more medication. Now, if you, you know, have the alcohol and then you have the medication, the side effects that the two would have would have, you know, worse, would create more situation in you. So if you could go to the next slide. So what are the options? So what are the options? Councilmember Franklin talked about it. There are two options as we get older, and I think one of the, and again, the councilmember, you know, repeatedly mentioned, knowledge is power. Like I said, I've been in business for four years, and one thing I feel is part of my mission is also to educate and inform everyone about the options that are available. That doesn't mean that you have to make the decision now or today, but it says it informs you about what options are available, especially because getting a caregiver or moving out of the home is an emotional decision, and when it happens, more likely than none, we are going to be overwhelmed, and at that time, if we don't have any information about the options, it will create a much more challenging situation for us to make the right decision, right? So there are two options. One is that what is considered as age in place, and that is for everything that I talked about, you know, some of those challenges or limitations that we may have, again, as we get older, that you hire a caregiver, one like councilmember was talking about, and the caregiver can help you with some of the activities, and I will go through some of that. The other option is that if home is not the best option, then you want to move into a community. And in both of these areas, our company can help with that, and I talk a little bit more about that. So if you could go to the next slide. Thank you. So I want to just mention briefly about our company. Our company is part of a franchise, but each office is owned and operated independently. Like I mentioned earlier, we have been in business for four years. State of California, as of last year, put a new mandate where all the in-home care companies need to be licensed through the state. There are many states across the country that had this requirement. California just established it as of last year. So we are licensed through the state and through the Department of Social Services. We are, as part of our business, we are insured, bonded, and we have workers' compensation. All the caregivers that we hired are our employees. They're not independent contractors, so we have an oversight over what they do. And as part of the licensing requirement, the state also put a mandate that all the caregivers need to be registered and fingerprinted through the state. So if you go to the state website, you will see the name of my company and all the others that are licensed. And also, if a caregiver, due to some criminal records, you know, even 10, 20 years ago, we have seen this, maybe even a misdemeanor about 20 years ago, if they are not approved through the registration, you will see a comment next to their name. So this all is, the state is putting some more steps in place to, you know, create more safety and security for, for the elderly, and the state is recognizing the fact that we are getting older, and there needs to be new measures, you know, around that. So the next slide, please. So like I said, we can help in both areas. So the first option that I talked about was having a caregiver. And again, aside from Alzheimer's or anybody, somebody that may have a terminal illness, that obviously you do need additional assistance, even for individuals that are healthy, right? As we get older and we live longer, because of the challenges we have, we may have, we may need some assistance with bathing, right? Again, if balance is an issue, we are in the shower, the, the floor is slippery, you know, if our blood pressure drops because there is too much steam or anything like that, we are not as flexible and agile as we were before, so it may take us a while to grab, you know, that, that door or whatever it is that, you know, that we need to hold on to. So having a companion or a caregiver in the house can be an assistant. They can still provide you your privacy, but be around to make sure that you do not fall. You know, some could be bed bound, some, you know, some clients, so feeding, they would need assistance with that, with dressing, continence, I talked about, using the toilet, going to the bathroom, transferring from, if someone is on a wheelchair, transferring from the wheelchair, you know, to the bed, from the bed, you know, to the car, providing transportation for doctor's appointments. A lot of times, the family members would like to be with the mom or dad at the doctor, so what a caregiver can do is that they can drive the, you know, mom or dad to the doctor's, then the children can meet at the doctor, be with the doctor, you know, hear what the, you know, what, what needs to be done, but then have some peace of mind that they can go back to their work. And, you know, mom or dad is being taken home by the caregiver in a safe environment. When they go home, they have proper meals. Nutrition is very, very critical. You know, even if you are younger, when you live on your own, a lot of time, we don't feel like cooking for ourselves. Now, as we get older, again, balance, walking, if we are using a walker, grocery shopping, which requires transportation, all of that could be, you know, could create more challenges. And if we are home and we are not eating properly, and we need to take medications also, again, all of that would have side effects, plus it would make us weaker, which puts us in a vicious cycle, right? So the idea is, when we have a caregiver at home, that can also help with light housekeeping, you know, doing the laundry, making sure that the person is taking the medications that they're prescribed by the doctor, they don't forget to take those medications. All of this would allow the person to live independently longer at their home. I mean, that's the message I would like to get to everyone, that for those who can afford it, there is no shame of having a caregiver at home. It is a luxury. And the caregiver would allow the person to be living independently, healthy, safely, longer at home. The extent of the support that the caregiver can provide is based on a care plan. So based on an assessment, we, you know, we determine with the individual, with the family members, how much care the person needs. And if the person, like, you know, councilmember was mentioning, is able to do most of the things himself, the caregiver is not going to be, you know, to forcing it on them that, "Well, I need, I must be doing this," giving them a special, still, you know, the privacy that they need. Thank you. Next slide, please. So the other option is that if home is not, you know, the, the appropriate place to stay, there could be different conditions. One is that if the person, for instance, has Alzheimer's, and the kind of Alzheimer's that is considered a wanderer, right? Sometimes when people have Alzheimer's, they cannot stay in one place. They constantly say, "I want to go home." So if they are in a room by themselves, they open the door to the house, they walk out. That causes major safety issues, right? So for that individual, you either need to have someone that is watching them all the time, or they cannot stay home by themselves. So that's, that's one issue. The other side of it is that some of us, especially if we have lost our spouse, and we are at home by ourselves, and again, family members are not around as much, but we are social individuals, if you are at home, maybe with just one caregiver, that doesn't create that environment, that stimulation that we need, whereas staying at home may not again be the best option. The third reason for that could be, when you're staying at home and you have a caregiver in general, because the ratio is one to one, you have one caregiver, one for, one client, the costs are usually higher. Whereas if you move outside home to a community where they have many caregivers, then the ratio is different, and the cost for the same level of, you know, for the same quality of life could be lower than that. So all of those could be reasons why we want to, we do, may not want to live at home and go out. Now, I made a distinction. I put the space between the two. So there are two options for staying or living outside home. One is if we were to be at a nursing home. The other term for it is called, is called skilled nursing facility, or in short, it's called a SNF. That's a medical facility. A lot of people use the term nursing home and the communities interchangeably. So I want to make sure we make that distinction. Nursing home is what we want to avoid. Why do we go to a medical facility? Maybe because we fell, right? We had a broken hip. We need, we go to the hospital, then we are sent to a nursing home to go through the rehab. Maybe there are some wounds, you know, we need to get some wound care. What we want to do is, we want to stay healthy, so put all the measures that we need to put in place, so we can avoid the nursing home. Obviously, you know, if we have some illness, you know, we have to go to the nursing home. Now, the non-medical community is the second option that I was talking about. So when I say home may not be the best option, the next best option could be a non-medical facility. There are different kinds of, they're called communities. So there's an independent living community, is a community where they provide the meals, they have caregiving if it is needed, they help make sure that you take your medication, they do the housekeeping, they do the laundry, they have outings, they have activities, they have transportations. So again, you know, for someone who doesn't need to worry about, doesn't want to worry about all of that, an independent living community would be a good option. Assisted living is basically the same as independent living with additional caregiving, with more caregiving. And then residential care home or board and cares, you may have seen these. These are houses. These are basically regular houses with maybe five or six residents. They are governed by the same rules and regulations at the assist, as the assisted living. So they're all licensed by the state of California, and, but what it is, is that you would be living with maybe four or five other residents. You would either have your private room or a shared room. There would be caregivers, they would do the meals, they would do the laundry, they would do the housekeeping and all of that. So the difference between the two would be, one is a larger community, maybe with 50 to 100 to 200 residents, each having their own room, and the other one would be a small house that can, you know, that can accommodate five or six, six individuals. If you could go to the next slide. Thank you. So as part of this, the service that we provide is a free service to the clients. So we do the assessment with the clients, and, you know, based on the needs, if staying at home is an option, is through the caregiving. If staying at home is not an option, what we do is that we have a database of about at least 70 of these communities, both the large and the small. I personally have visited each one of these communities. I meet with the administrator, take a tour of the community. We have a detailed checklist of what these communities offer, what the price is, what services, what amenities, and all of that. So once we do the assessment with the clients or the family members, then we can identify two or three communities that meet the requirements. We can make the appointments. Sometimes the communities have promotions where they waive some of the fees, and so we can help with all of that, and that would be as part of, part of the option, too. And if we can go to the next slide. How would clients in general pay for these services? So if you have, the third item is long-term care insurance. If you have long-term care insurance, long-term care covers these services. It is, the other options are the personal pay, if there are retirement savings, if social security payments, if there's a pension payment, will cover that. If you are a veteran or a surviving spouse of a veteran, there is a benefit, as part of the veteran's benefit, is called aid and attendance. It is different than the medical benefit that you would receive. You could very well qualify, and there are some qualifications for that, but as a veteran, you could qualify for up to $1,700 a month tax-free, payment by the VA. As a surviving spouse, you could qualify for up to $1,300 to $1,400 a month, and the payments would go directly to your bank account. But there needs to be, you know, go through some, some qualifications for that, basically. And we have been told there are literally billions of dollars of aid and attendance that is sitting on the table, because people are not claiming, claiming those, you know, those benefits. So those would be the other options that you can use to, to pay for the services. And the last slide is basically my contact information, you know, my email address. We have a brochure, I think, in your packet, and also a couple, you know, articles about arthritis, how to live with arthritis, and also, you know, how to reduce the chances of strokes, some good tips, you know, as far as being able to live longer, healthy, and safe. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. We'll take a couple of questions or comments. Anyone? We can get the mic right in front. She didn't raise her hand this time. Oh.
Those veteran benefits, are they for all veterans or, or just those who had some, some circumstances in battle or something like that, some...
Right, so the, it, it, it's not directly related to any physical, like, you know, disabilities. One of the, like, three or four specific questions that they ask, well, one of the requirements is, for instance, that you need to have served in one of the wars for one day at least, right? And then the others are more around the income and the assets that the individual have. Unfortunately, the threshold for the aid and attendance has remained very low, even though the cost of living has gone up. So they look at those costs, but what happens is that if you are paying for caregiving or moving into a community, you can use that as part of the expenses, which would bring down the overall income, which may then qualify you for the aid and attendance benefit.
Okay. Let's hand her the mic.
You can be a veteran during, during peacetime. Does that not qualify you?
Right, I think for the aid and attendance, there, there is one day of service in, in war, I believe, is part of the requirement. But again, that is, those are the rules that the VA has set up, and, you know, I can share that information, you know, with councilmember, because I don't have all of that information with me. There would be, you know, other organizations that can help with that, with, you know, filling out the forms and all of that.
Okay, thank you. Short little legs.
Hi, thank you for being here tonight.
Sure.
My wife and I are 24, seven caretakers for her mother, 90, 92 years old, bedridden. She has dementia. We're, we've been doing it for three years, and we haven't had a break. Does your company offer temporary, like, we, we want to maybe have one day a week or so, where we can get somebody to come in for four to five hours, maybe?
Sure.
You know, once or twice a month, so we can have a date or something?
Right, no, of course, and yes, yes, and the services, you know, can be, the frequency, we leave it up to the clients. Sometimes also, you know, some individuals are resistant to the idea, so my recommendation is to start small and slow, so they get used to the setting, having a professional stranger in the house, but absolutely, yes, that's an option, too, yes.
Okay, one more question or comment, I think, gentle lady. Okay.
Yes, I have a question about the different communities again.
Sure.
Assisted living, who would normally be eligible or, or would be a candidate to live in assisted living?
Right, for assist, so assisted living is a community where they would prepare, so one of the basics are, they prepare the meals, they do the laundry, they do the housekeeping, they have med techs or caregivers that make sure the individual takes their medication. Now, the extent of the care that they need could vary. So somebody could come in and they could consider, if the individual is able to take their shower, for instance, is able to go to the bathroom, and they just need the basics, they would say, "Well, this individual doesn't need any caregiving." Somebody else needs, says, "Well, I need assistance when I go to the shower and go to the bathroom." They may consider it. So they would assign a caregiver that would be with that individual maybe for a couple hours a day, and that individual, for instance, would be as, you know, care level one. Then there may be somebody else that is on wheelchair and is wearing diapers and needs additional assistance. So all of that, as long as you do not have a medical need, because there are no doctors, and there are some communities that have nurses on staff, but again, they are not licensed to provide medical support. So as long as the person does not have a medical need, then an assisted living community could be suitable for them, yes.
Okay, let's give Lali a hand, please. Thank you. Thank you, dear.